And we have forty-five to, what does it say in there? Forty-five to plus pounds?
Thirty-five to fifty.
Thirty-five to fifty pounds per square inch pressure. So we have adequate pressure all over the town. So it's been that way forever, but we had our insurance, or not our insurance, but our engineers come here and do the graph. They did a graph, like a twenty-four hour monitoring like the vacuum does out there at the air vac for the vacuum sewers. And they got a pin on it that chart reports the whole pressure all the time. So the report is going to be coming to us. It's, uh, the report is going to be just a professional report, but we have plenty of water, but what they're doing out there, I don't know. So that's where we're at with that. So, once we get the engineer here, maybe we could, you know, if we have to, maybe try to accommodate it and pick more pressure up, I don't know. But it's been that way for a long time and we do have the pressure, so. Anything else? If not, we'll move to communications. Does anybody have anything for communications today?
I do not.
Burns, Mark?
No.
Brian, Chase?
Nope.
Okay, let's move on to the public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight for curbside recycling bids. So the public hearing is now open. We do have one bid here. For the record, this bid is from, it says Republic Service, which is a division of Key Waste, is that right?
Key Waste is a division of Republic Service.
Okay, so the bid is from Key Waste then, right? Okay. To shorten it, is it on which page do you remember?
The last page.
The last page? Okay, the quote from, it would be from Key Waste is a three-year contract based on two-hundred-and-twenty-five homes in the town limits as requested in the bid specs with bi-weekly recycle pickup. Republic would also place ninety-six gallon trash toders out in the town for two-hundred-and-twenty-five customers. The rates, two thousand and fifteen to start is five dollars and fifty cents per month. Two thousand and sixteen, a four percent increase, which would be five dollars and seventy-two cents per month. Two hundred, two thousand and seventeen, another four percent increase, would be five nine, five dollars and ninety-five cents per month. That is the bid, so at this time, we'll take it under advisement, is that right?
You can probably act on it if you want to because the solid waste board, when we met last Wednesday, set the amount that we could afford to pay at two dollars and seventy cents. So that's slightly more than double that. So I think it's safe to say that while the solid waste district could adjust it a little bit upwards, we can't go two dollars and eighty cents more money. We just simply don't have the money.
So at this time, you've got here on the contract for curbside collection, that I have this paper up here for, and under B, it does say the duty of the district. Does everybody have that?
No.
Nobody has that?
I get one to Brian and one to you.
So, when is the council meet, or the board, solid waste board meet again? It's like a month from now?
December twentieth.
December twentieth? And when is the actual contract expired?
December thirty-first.
December thirty-first? What's your name back there?
Bob.
Bob? Bob?
Stone.
Stone? Do you have a expiration date on this for the contract to be accepted if you have it in here? Is it?
No.
So many, okay.
It's got the full ninety days.
Oh, okay. So there's a ninety day in here? Okay. So at this time, we're just gonna have to probably wait until the next meeting of solid waste. I mean, we can't accept it without the solid waste, so we're gonna have to go back and see what we're gonna do in the future, how we're gonna handle this.
How much more do we need to come up with?
The, you said it was two-seventy, right?
Yes.
So, so it's five-fifty, so that's basically...
Nine.
He can pay two-seventy and five-fifty.
Three.
Dollar eighty times two-hundred and twenty-five pounds.
It's two-seventy, about two, well, it'd be two-eighty. Two-eighty, we'd have to come up with two dollars and eighty cents, right?
Minimum of dollars.
And then it's gonna raise in four percent in two thousand and sixteen, and then raise in two thousand and seventeen, four percent, so it would be three dollars roughly, three-something.
So it'd be eighteen, if we do a minimum of a thousand homes, dollar eighty more would be eighteen, eighteen hundred dollars.
There's two-hundred and twenty-five homes.
No, no, that's incorrect. There's, it's based on a minimum of a thousand.
Oh, there's a thousand homes?
Could actually be as many as three thousand a month.
So this is something that the council's gonna have to look at in the future. If we, we talked about it, you know, you can, there's a possibility of bidding trash and recycling if it comes down to it.
What's the current rate we're paying for this year?
Two dollars and fifty cents.
Two fifty?
And how many customers do we have now, roughly?
Average is probably just under fifteen hundred a month.
Fifteen hundred a month.
Comes out to about a thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven over the last twelve months.
Is the same company doing ours that's doing, say, Akron?
Yes.
Okay. I wonder if they're gonna submit a bid for Akron?
Key Waste was the only bidder in Akron.
Key Waste was?
Okay. Do you do Plymouth, Indiana?
Yes.
So you do it for Mayor Center?
Yes.
Trash and recycling?
Yeah, you get the recycle. If you bid trash and recycle out together, you will get a lot better deal than you will just bidding out the recycle alone.
I know a lot of cities, they do bid it out for the trash. Mayor Terry McDonald, you know him from New Haven, they bid it out and they also, you know, the trash hauler bills the people direct too, so. I know we talked about that before, Andy, but New Haven, they do it with their contractor there somehow. They do, they bid it out, and I know Mayor Center changed that in Plymouth to...
Five years ago.
Right, when he first came in office, and that was his first challenge there. He did away with the trash trucks and the department and contracted it with you guys who won the bid for the contract, so that's something that...
We do it a little differently because we use carts for all homes. It just makes it look a lot nicer, a lot neater, and we don't do any alley pickup because they put it in the alley. People have a tendency to just throw it out. Where it is, it is. If it's on the street in front of their house where all their neighbors see it, they try to keep it cleaned up.
And not to put you on the spot, but do you approximately know the rate up there when you do both the, I know I get it from Center, but for trash and?
Plymouth's a little different because of the things that they added in.
Mm-hmm.
It just depends on how you write your bid specs. It could be anywhere from twelve, about twelve and a half dollars a month on up to fifteen and a half dollars a month, depending on how you write your specs, you know, what you want done. You want containers for a town cleanup, once a year, twice a year. You want containers for all the town-owned businesses, you like town hall stuff, or you just want toders. Just how you write it will determine all that.
So that, is that counting the recycling both for fifteen dollars a month?
Yeah, that's trash and recycling.
For a month? So what do we pay here by independent contractors? We got five or six contractors running up and down the streets every day, busting up our streets, and my bills are anyway from twenty-five dollars to forty dollars a month, not counting recycling. So when you contract it out, then you get the, one person wins the whole contract, but he also gives everybody a break because you get a better rate usually for the whole city. That's a big difference.
Yes, it is.
Plus recycling. So I think it's something that we need to address as the council to, we got till the first of the year to decide what we need to do, you know?
It's not that far away, and then you'd open the bids up to any trash haulers that want to do both trash and recycle together.
Right.
Open it all up.
A lot of cities do it, I mean, a lot of cities used to provide the trash in their water bill, but then some cities like New Haven, they still do it and contract it. I don't know who does it. Does Key Waste do New Haven over by Fort Wayne?
Uh, we might. I think Servall might do New Haven. I know they do Fort Wayne itself, so I think they do do New Haven too, if I'm sure.
Yeah, I don't know, but I could find out who does it, but...
Yeah, the rates will vary depending if, you know, if each person in town has to be billed independently, then the rates vary because you're gonna have a lot of people that won't pay their bills, and they have to count that in it. Where if you add it into the water bill, like probably ninety percent of the towns do that, and then when they add it in, they also add a little bit in for their administration fee. So you get it for fourteen dollars a home, they charge everybody in town fifteen, so they've got a little bit of money to help cover their administration fee for handling it.
I like it better if the contractor does the own billing, then he doesn't have to run through you, you know, I mean, in the clerk's office, because Mayor McDonald does it that way. I'll have to get with Mayor McDonald and see how he, how they did it, but I know Andy and I said that, we talked about it before, and we didn't know if we could do that, but Mayor McDonald doesn't bill it through the city, so. In New Haven, so...
Doing it like that, you're probably talking another, probably two to three dollars a home on top of that, where each one has to get billed independently.
Right. But that's still a lot better than why I pay my trash bill now. I don't know what everybody else believes, but it's still, you know, something that needs to look at.
Yeah, the only problem you run, excuse me, the only problem you run into with that is if this person doesn't pay their bill and you quit picking their trash up because they're not paying it. If they're on Main Street, you've got all this trash piled up on Main Street, and once in a while, that presents a little bit of a problem.
Same problem we'd have now.
Yeah, that'd be coming back to reflect where the city police would probably give a citation, and then we'd pick it up and we'd do a hundred dollar an hour pickup for us and put a lien on the property. I would assume that's how that would work, probably, Andy, if we went that way, but this is something that's, anybody else have any thought on this? Burns, you got anything, think on that?
You know, I, some people just don't recycle.
Right.
And, you know, they're gonna pay for it anyhow, but they just don't recycle.
Right.
I don't have enough to recycle anything.
Right.
We recycle quite a bit. So Doug, if we don't, I mean, right now in the short term, it looks like we can't fund this. Will city residents still be able to bring stuff into the...
Sure.
...the center on their own?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So that's another option then, too?
Yeah. Because we operated for a long time without having curbside, but there's no doubt, just with conversations I've had with a lot of people that use the curbside program, we're gonna lose at least half of our recyclers without having, but that's also pretty difficult. Places where they've discontinued curbside, that's always what happens. There's a lot of people that are not willing to take it somewhere.
I don't curbside, but I go to the place, but a lot of my neighbors do, and on a windy day, I end up getting little carts and cereal boxes in my yard, so I take them later. You throw them out the window, huh?
Well, even, even if you, like you said, Burns, if you don't use the system...
No.
But the price that we get, it wouldn't matter if they use it or not, because the amount of trash per month would be a lot less money. I mean, I don't know who, you know, I'm not missing names, but I know I'm all over the board. My cheapest bill is twenty-four seventy-five, and one's forty dollars a month for different haulers, so I don't know what you pay, but, you know, no names need to mention, but, you know, I mean, when you start looking at that, it doesn't matter if you'd recycle or not, you could still have the toder, and you might promote it to go green too, as far as, you know, doing the recycling. So, I mean, it'd be a promotion there, but of course, a lot of people aren't gonna do it anyway. But the nice thing about it, you don't have baskets that blow all over your neighbor's yard. You've got regular toders in Plymouth, just like the toders you use for trash. Ones for recyclables and ones for garbage.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a few options. I mean, we either have to try to come up with the money for continued curbside, explore the option the mayor wants, or just get rid of it altogether.
You know, I, I don't know where we're gonna get the money, you know, I mean, you know, we don't have anything budgeted for that, but...
If it's a rainy day, yes.
But, yeah, I mean, I don't think that's what, I wouldn't be against taking rainy day money out, they would only fund it for a short period of time. I mean, I haven't done the math, but when you do the math there...
Fifty-four hundred dollars a year.
How much?
Fifty-four hundred dollars a year. If, if that's, it's, if we come up with the extra dollar eighty...
It's two-eighty.
Based on that, or...
It's two-eighty.
Two-eighty, two-eighty.
Per month.
Yeah.
That'd be per month.
Yeah.
Thousand, fifteen hundred customers per month.
Well, and he said it conflicts between a thousand and three thousand.
Right.
So the minimum would be...
Five thousand a month.
A month.
And then the maximum would be up to three thousand per month. So if you do...
Five thousand a month, sixty grand a year. You know, I mean, if it's five thousand, yeah, I mean, sixty, a hundred grand a year, so. I mean, you come to this kind of money, that's where you'd wanna bid it out if we're gonna make that move. There's two options. I know it's not popular, but, you know, how many trash trucks go up and down the streets?
Too many.
Every day. At least, you pick up how many times in Plymouth? One, once a week in a neighborhood?
In each neighborhood, yeah, once a week. One trash, one recycle on the same days.
And you're the only contractor that is allowed to do the trash service since you won the bid?
Yes.
So one, one trash truck in your neighborhood a week versus, we probably have eight.
That would hold Manta Falls Heights.
I know five for sure.
They can opt out of, was it? They can opt out of...
I would think it'd give people an incentive to recycle.
Right, right.
Doug?
If it's apartment building, it has four, four apartments or more.
Can you talk up for the meeting there, Doug, if you're talking, so everybody can hear?
Was that, did you ask him if people could opt out?
I was told by the quirk appointment that, and granted, she's relatively good at the job, but she told me that people can opt out, that they have to come in and show that they have a, a private hauler collecting their trash, like show them a bill or something, and then they won't charge them on the water bill. But I was talking to Bob about it, and he said that he doesn't think that's correct.
Yeah, I don't think that's true either. I mean, I'm talking to Center, I think Center just contracted it through the whole city, but I'm not saying it doesn't happen.
Right.
Might be one or two, but...
Where would those recyclables go? Yeah, I'm saying, if you, we set up here what they have in Plymouth, would you take them to our local?
No, they go back to our shop, and then from our shop, depending on what it is, it may go to Chicago, it may go to South Bend, just depending on the market and the time.
Okay.
Part of it goes diversified, part of it goes up for recycle works, just depends on the market and the time.
Well, I think for the city, I mean, maybe we should get a committee to evaluate this, maybe get a few council members on it so we don't have a quorum and check into this.
Andy, is this something, if we went that route, under a recyclable and trash pickup, would that be an ordinance that would have to be passed? Or is that just something that...
I suspect where the ordinance comes into it is in the, in the extent to which you prohibit other haulers. In other words, there's the city saying, we're no longer provide this, we're gonna provide this service, and we're gonna hire someone to do it. I think that's the easy part. The hard part is if you're gonna, if you're gonna create a monopoly to the, to the contractor that gets the contract, how do you, how do you lawfully prevent, you know, Joe Smith from saying, I don't want the, oh, he's this guy for my trash, kinda thing? That's probably the main thrust of having an ordinance.
We do have a trash haul ordinance. I don't recall what it says, but we do have one.
That might be where we'll first from that.
Yes.
Yes, it's not really a monopoly. They don't prohibit other haulers, actually. You know, everybody that's residential into town is contracted with this one hauler. Now, if you've got commercial businesses, things like that, that want a different hauler, they're not contracted with it, they can use whatever hauler they want.
For dumpsters.
Yes, just, this just strictly is on the residential side.
Well, I, I'd get with Mayor Haven, Mayor McDonald at New Haven, but does anybody wanna pursue this and check it out, or what's everybody's intention? I mean, that's just an option to, I think something's gonna be, need to be done eventually.
I mean, we, it depends if we wanna save curbside recycling. I mean, that's basically where we're at.
Right, and, I mean, it's, I don't know how much money is gonna, you know, the tipping fee keeps going down. I mean, you see that, Chase, here on the board, I mean, it's, goes down, we're not getting near what we used to get, but...
It's actually not going down now, it's pretty stable.
It's holding its own.
Much less than we used to get.
Yeah, but are we still, our expenses are more exceeding what we're bringing in every month?
Fastly.
Yes, yeah, so, that's what I'm saying, so, I mean, our equity, our reserves are going down every month.
They are.
Even though we've, we're still got a few years to operate, I'm sure, but...
We got ninety days, do we not?
Yes.
Well, what do we look into?
Yeah, we have ninety days with this bid.
Right.
Curbside stops end of the year.
December, January first, so...
Thirty days.
What would be the timeline to do this if we put it out for bid? I mean, just...
Depends on the existing contracts and what your obligations are to those, if any.
The public hearing would be, you have to advertise it so long for a public bid?
I think so.
Is it forty-five days?
I don't think it's that long. I think it's only, because it's a, I don't know if there's a difference between a contract and service and the public bid option, and if we were just purchasing something. Because if we're just purchasing something, it's usually ten to fifteen days that we have to advertise prior to the public hearing. If it's a service contract or contracts such as this, it may be a little different, so we may have to...
I, I don't think it's likely you're going to get an all-in-one bidding and contract and all that in place before January.
Right, yeah.
I think that's unlikely.
Okay.
You're gonna get your haulers enough time to get together there now.
Well, we'll just...
Well, if that's the case, then we'll probably just stop the curbside...
For a couple months?
For a couple months and take the time to look at this right and completely.
Yeah, because if that's something we wanna explore, we don't wanna be accepting a bid for curbside, because that locks us in for a year.
Right, right.
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
Yeah.
If you, if you were to okay that, I mean, actually award that, we're paying for one year, so if you do that, the city's gonna be on the hook for the second and third year.
Right.
So even if they came in at the two dollars and seventy cents?
Yes, even if they came in at the two dollars and seventy cents.
Yeah. Well, I think we, we need to get some more information on this and...
What action do we need to take on the bid? Andy, anything?
Under advisement?
I don't think, I don't think you need to take any action on the bid.
Okay. Just take it under advisement, and we'll, I thank you for bidding on it, and we'll just have to, you know, I guess it's marketing one-on-one to look at your services here, but we need to do something, so we're gonna have to look into this further to see what we can work out.
Yeah. If you're gonna, if you're anticipating bidding out everything, trash and recycle, I wouldn't accept it, because if you do, you know, that's gonna mess that up for you.
You mean, you wouldn't accept what?
Wouldn't accept that.
Oh, no, 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 no. We'd have to rebid the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, I'm with you there, yeah. No, we're not, I think that's something that we're gonna have to look at doing, how we're gonna do this.
I think a bid and recycle is the thing that we're gonna have to really investigate a lot, a lot further and deeper, because it sounds like the most logical way to go.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not popular, but somebody, everybody's got the chance to bid it, you know? I mean, it's a contracting job, but I know that, when I mentioned this before, I got about two phone calls real quick about it, so, by individual contractors, but it's something that, for the, not only for the citizens, for the trash bill and recycling, but also our streets and alleys and trucks out there at Mantle Heights have done a lot of damage to probably our sewers out there too, I mean, over the period of time, so. There's more to it than just picking up trash as far as wear and tear on our streets, so, and the safety of kids running around too, with the trucks running up and down residential neighborhoods, so. There's a lot of things you could start looking at, the pros and cons, so.
Yeah, that's your number one priority, safety.
Yeah, exactly, and that's the key, so I guess we'll just check into it and take this under advisement this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, anything else from the council members?
No, thanks.
Any other, well, we'll close the public hearing then. If unless there's anybody from the audience that wants to say anything more? Okay, public hearing is now closed for curbside recycling bids. We'll move on to communications. Does anybody have any communications?
Okay, let's move on to police reports. Chief Schatz?
My name's Andy Schatz. You gentlemen have the monthly reports for October. As you can see, we had fifteen total accidents, with one being a personal injury accident. Hundred and forty-two warnings were issued. Eight of those were for city ordinances. Total offenses were sixty-two, with twenty-one being traffic, thirty-nine criminal and two juvenile. Total case reports for the month was forty-six. We had seven hundred and seventy-four calls for service, thirty-nine lockouts, five towed vehicles, and twenty people incarcerated. And then you'll see, I also included what the crimes of people were lodged for, if you have any questions on those. Kinda ran the gamut this month, or last month.
Yeah, you did. You don't have to fill every category in with...
I'm not trying to. I don't wanna pitch to. Do you guys have any questions about the monthly report? And then I'll give...
Okay. Yeah, we talked about the ordinance here, does everybody have? I sent everybody an email. Schatz, you have an email from Andy on this ordinance for the parking?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got it.
And I wanna know where on Monroe, Twelfth Street is.
Twelfth?
Twelfth Monroe?
Twelfth to Monroe. Yeah, going off of Monroe, and I wanted that, now it has to, it has to go east-west, right?
What?
Monroe?
Twelfth to Monroe is J.C.
Is J.C. Park?
No.
It's between Ninth and Twelve?
Ninth, I'm sorry.
Monroe, running Ninth and Twelve?
I said, I said, yeah. Ninth and Twelve.
Monroe between Ninth and Twelfth.
Yeah.
Yeah, the three blocks. That's the J.C. Park?
Right, J.C. Park.
Twelfth.
Yeah. Yeah. Ninth Street to Twelfth Street there, where it's all congested on Monroe?
Yeah, I, I know where Ninth Street is. I'm concerned about Twelfth Street. I, I live on the corner of Eleventh and Madison.
You live on Fifteenth in Madison.
Is it Fifteenth? No, they took the sign down.
What's your address?
It's Sixteenth, and I hit the county, Twelfth, and I lost track of two, two streets. Okay, I'm with you now. Yeah, I got, I got lost.
I think you got us lost too.
Somebody's dragged me home.
Had me worried there.
Yeah, well, you got me worried too.
I know...
We talked about Fourteenth. We talked about Fourteenth, we talked about going to Fourteenth.
Some of those streets don't go anywhere through.
Andy did both of them, but, oh, Andy Perkins, I mean, there's two Andys here, so...
Right, we talked about extending it, uh, no parking on Monroe from Ninth to Fourteenth. Um, to keep it consistent, it's gonna be no parking on the east side since it's on the east side of town. Uh, that's gonna force, uh, people in the twelve-hundred block of Monroe to park right up against the park, and I don't know that we wanna do that. So that's why we had both ways drafted, but I think if we stop it at Twelfth Street, because right there in the thirteen and fourteen, I'm sorry, the twelve and thirteen-hundred block of Monroe, it's not too bad. But Chase, I know you know how bad it was last winter, uh, between Ninth and, and Twelfth Street, uh, with parking on both sides, and then that snow just makes that road even more narrow. And then the other street, another street was Fulton Avenue between Fifth and Sixth, and that's mainly for the buses. And then Clay Street between Third and Fourth, right there in front of Riddle School. The problem we're having there is school lets out at two forty-five, three o'clock, whatever it is, and people start lining up at one-thirty to pick up their kids, and they're parking double, double parking, taking up the entire road, so we can't get an emergency vehicle if anything were to happen, and it's, it's preventable if we just keep no parking. And right there, I know Andy said that we have no parking on the west side of Clay, down farther, but if we do, we, we wanna, I think we wanna keep them off the east side of the road, because on the west side, it's all parking lots in front of the school, so that's not gonna do any good anyway. Um, no one, it wouldn't be reasonable to put no parking on the west side when all of it's parking spaces.
Well, they wanna keep the traffic moving, skeeter.
We need, uh, at least a lane, a lane to get through.
Before school gets out, and yet in there, you're gridlocked, you can't go.
Yeah, and I drove by today at about two forty-five, and it's like, it's like the Indy 500, they're getting ready for the green flag to drop, and they're parking too, too wide across the street, and there's not a lane to, to go through if something were to happen. And even if it's, you know, an emergency vehicle trying to cut through over to, to get to Third Street after the fairgrounds or Thirty-One or something, it's, you're gonna have to go around him, because it's gridlocked right there for at least an hour. Um, so I think if we put no parking on the east side, keep them off that side street, that way at least there's, or off that side is gonna keep one lane open, and it might make the long, the line a little bit longer, and somebody might have to get there a little bit earlier to be first in line, but... So those are the three that are proposed right now, and, and I don't know what your guys' thoughts are about the, the Monroe between Twelfth and Fourteenth, um, but...
Andy, you did both of them, that, that's, we talked after you did the first one, but then we did them both, so we talked about it, and we didn't put the one ways on yet, because talking to a few of the council members, and then Terry Lee with everything that's going on, I just feel that with sidewalks and school, and the winter's coming up now, and we're working with Downtown Main Street Program, and I had several calls about local businesses that are on there that didn't, like, that's talking about changing it, one was the Dr. Boldry's office parking there. So I just think, uh, talking, I think it just needs a little bit more evaluation, and we can talk to Andy Perkins, our attorney, that we can always amend it once we get to that, to have a plan, and talking to Terry Lee, we've got about six months maybe before we're really looking for that plan, or...
Yeah, I, some of the plans for the redevelopment commission include one-side parking, specifically on, uh, Madison, Jefferson, and then some of the cross-streets, Sixth and Eighth and Eleventh and Thirteenth, but that's really all we've looked at so far, and we're just starting to look at that. So, I mean, I, I, I mean, if you have emergency reasons for doing it, then we don't wanna get in the way of, of access and that kind of thing at, at all, or hold anything up, you know, where you need, you know, something right of way. But, yeah, we're looking at ways to take some of the one-way, basically extending the one-way streets, having parking on one side, and then basically bike lanes and so forth on the other side, so, and that's the redevelopment commission project, and then for the Safe Routes to School grant that the city has, we're looking at all the city streets, including close to the schools, and what's the best way to get kids to school, you know, by walking and biking and stuff like that, instead of, you know, more traffic congestion and those kind of things, and so we'll be looking at different ways to, uh, to route students to school that, that may cross over, you know, some of the parking on one side issues. But, yeah, I mean, Safe Routes Group meets, um, the second?
Tuesday.
Yeah, next Tuesday to just start with our consultant on the planning and looking and everything, so, yeah, it's probably gonna be another, probably two or three months before we feel like we have all of it looked at in its entirety. And what we're, what we're doing is looking at the streets that Brian sent me, and what you guys are considering for parking on one side, and considering that and trying to take it into account with our overall comprehensive planning for street escapes and access to schools and neighborhoods and stuff like that, but as far as from the emergency side or access side.
I think with all the snow we had last year, and I think that's why we wanna kinda get this addressed now, so we don't have to, have to run into the same problem we did last year with the snow on Monroe Street, and it was really, we had a lot of complaints last year, I remember, on Monroe.
And I just don't wanna move forward and, and then have to do it all again, I think we just, I mean, I think it needs to be done one time when we do it, and, and so I think the emergency now is the, the snow removal that we started with, um, I think John...
The snow removal signs?
Well, it's no removal of parking, no parking in those two areas.
Parking, I've been after the parking deal for a couple of years now.
Right.
I'd like to see the parking, you know, as, as a safety factor, I have Chief Butler, I've talked to him many times, I call him and ask him, I say, "Chief, you know, see if you can get, take your car, drive down through, tell me you can get a fire truck down here."
Yep.
He calls him back and goes, "There ain't no way."
And the other one I am concerned about is Elm Street, um, between Tenth and Twelfth, but no one, no one in those two blocks, I don't think, has off-street parking. So if we were to, if we were to go no parking on one side of the street there, it's gonna jam-pack the other side, and there's gonna be fights over parking spaces, and I don't want that to happen. Um, I don't think it was a real issue last year, but it does get narrow.
I think that somewhere we need to do that, enforce our ordinance, park on one side at that point, you know, we have the ordinance that if you have a lot of snow, that you're supposed to park on the eve or odd, I don't know which one it is.
I was gonna mention that we have that.
Yeah, we do have that in place already, so...
And, and then Elm Street, if we get the neighborhood to buy into that, which, that would help a lot too, is get one side of the street clean, because when you have to go around the cars, it's just, it just gets worse.
The street gets skinnier.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And now, we have those signs, did we get those signs in? More than have snow, more than the signs?
I, we just talked about that yesterday.
Because we were gonna put those up at the same time?
We, yeah.
As we were putting these parking...
Warren went out around yesterday to look and see how the signs said where no parking was, 'cause I, I wanted to kinda match them the same way we got them in different areas of the city, and then get with Andy, so it won't take too long to get them, but we're gonna, we're gonna put two, I think, in each block, you think that'd be enough?
It should be, yeah.
You know, that's what we figured too.
Like on Monroe and Fulton, what we're talking about, I would think so. This, like, the, the street department know more about that than I would, but I think typically that's what happens, is there's two in each block.
So are they're in the works right now as we speak, so...
And we'll definitely advertise.
We're assuming this will get passed as well.
When the snow does start coming, we'll advertise...
Right.
On the radio and in the paper with the ordinance for snow removal, and I've also gotten some complaints about parking too close to, um, intersections and, and stop signs and stuff, so I'm gonna do something in the paper about that also.
So do you need a copy of the, I guess the first question I'm gonna ask, the copy of the ordinance that Andy created, if we're looking at Ninth to Twelfth on Monroe, or if you want Ninth to Fourteenth?
They have the Ninth to Twelfth.
We have, you have the Ninth to Twelfth. I sent everybody a copy of the Ninth to Twelfth, and then we changed it on the Fourteenth, but, uh, I mean, I, I rely on Andy's expertise there as a chief, what he recommends.
I, I think to Twelfth Street would be sufficient, I, I really do. Between Twelfth and Fourteenth has never really been a big issue, um, but I know, like I said, for consistency, a lot of streets, well, some of the streets do continue to Fourteenth Street, but I just, I, I, I think we'll be safe to go into Twelfth Street and stopping it there.
'Cause the J.C. Park takes up most of that area right here.
It's a quarter, uh, half the block, yeah.
So we either, uh, look at this now while we're talking about it, I mean, it's on the bottom of the agenda, or we can come back to it, whichever you wanna do, since, you wanna go ahead and do it now, since we've got it here in front of us?
I think so.
All right, and then what would be the number on this, uh...
Twelve.
This is twelve?
Mm-hmm. 'Cause I wasn't sure if it would be right, so I did not include it down to five, I put a question mark.
Okay, so it is twelve, yeah, I see that, okay, so this would be twelve. Well, then I would entertain a motion to, um, read ordinance number twelve dash twenty-fourteen by title only, first time. So move. Second. All in favor to read ordinance number twelve, 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 uh, twenty-fourteen, excuse me, okay, six-zero. Okay, Brian, number, yeah, you can borrow it.
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty-fourteen, ordinance amending the parking code.
Okay, now I would entertain a motion to read ordinance number twelve dash twenty-fourteen, probably in its entirety, since it's not very long. So move.
Second.
All right, in favor? Would you please read that in its entirety?
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty-fourteen, an ordinance amending the parking code, whereas the common council of the city of Rochester has determined that certain portions of the city's parking regulations should be amended. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the common council of the city of Rochester that Chapter Seventy-Six, Schedule One, entitled No Parking Zones, be amended to include the following language to the prohibitions under Subpart A, additions are indicated in bold and redacted language and strikeout. Monroe Street, between Eighth Street and Ninth Street, also between Ninth Street and Twelfth Street, east side. Fulton Avenue, between Fifth Street and Sixth Street, west side. Clay, Third Street to Fourth Street, east side. All portions of Schedule One not regulating Monroe, Fulton and Clay Streets remain unchanged, passed by the common council of Rochester in the end.
Thank you. Okay, I would take, uh, entertain a motion to read the ordinance number twelve dash twenty-fourteen to amend the parking cor, code by title only?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty-fourteen, ordinance amending the parking code.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to make passes, ordinance number twelve dash twenty-fourteen for vote on amending the parking code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor to pass ordinance number twelve dash twenty-fourteen to amend the parking code? Say aye. Okay, passes six-zero. Okay, um, let's move back to, uh, I know we've got a few things here, but Casey, you have here for the building here, and then we'll move to...
Question, is he done?
Oh, well, I, I think you're done, aren't you?
I'm just making sure.
Thank you, chief. Do you have a comment to, or afterwards?
Uh, I guess I'm on the agenda for redevelopment commission, so I think everything I've got to that.
Okay. Casey?
This would be, uh, the update for, um, the Old Bailey Building, um, you guys have, you guys had decided to give him three months, I believe, the last time he was here. I gave you the set of pictures, one was from June, um, June twenty-fourth, and then the other set is from today, just so that you could, um, kinda see the difference, we have had a couple of reports from the neighbors that, that hear the bricks falling on the roof, which they obviously have to go somewhere, they're not staying on the wall. I think this point is really kind of in the city council's hands and your attorneys as far as exactly what you wanna do, I have not heard from Mr. Abbott, um, as far as any plans, and the last time he spoke to you, he said he was purchasing scaffolding to fix it, um, himself, I believe, but there has not been, from what I can see from the photos and stuff, nothing has been fixed.
Oh, boy.
I assume there's no scaffolding there either?
This picture was literally taken this, uh, this morning. Now, there may be scaffold inside, I don't know that.
Was he aware of the meeting tonight? Was he gonna, but you haven't talked to him, have you?
I have not spoke to him, and actually, I believe the update was actually supposed to happen last month, um, and it slipped my mind, 'cause I was out for my back surgery at the time, and Shaw and I just happened to be having a conversation, and I was like, "Oh, wow," so...
This was originally brought up last year, wasn't it?
It started last year, you guys, I think, gave him a year, uh, to do repairs, and at that time, the holes were much smaller, um, and then in June it came back to you, and I believe that's when you told him to have it done by October. Or by November first, which would've been your October meeting, I think that's what it was.
Would you, uh, advise us all as to what our options are, please, Casey?
I believe your options would be, um, to demolish the building, I mean, you could do that, put a lien on the property, uh, you could, I believe, fix it, and again, put a lien against the property. I think that's pretty much it at this point, I mean, Andy would have a better knowledge of that than I would.
You could, you could affirm the order, and before we demolish it, uh, or set foot to improve it, you, you'll want an order from the court in that proceeding, but basically, if you, if you affirm the order, I would file a complaint, find the unsafe building ordinance, and, uh, seek, uh, a penalty and judgment against him, and seek an order from the court, giving you permission to enter the property, to do whatever you deem necessary to bring it up specs for something that's, launching it for something that's not, um, and, and authorizing any of those costs you incur to both go against the judgment and go against the, uh, taxes for property.
What if there is a, a lien holder, or like a mortgage company that...
You know, any, the first thing I do is I get a title search, and, and make any lien holder as a, as defendant, uh, for the purpose of giving them notice of the proceeding. And if there is a, uh, and if there is an active mortgage, that's gonna get their attention pretty quickly. And so, uh, norm, most of these properties, that's not the case, I would say most of them I filed, there's not a mortgage, current mortgage on it, but, um...
If there is, I mean, they probably wanna make sure their collateral is...
Yeah.
In good shape.
So if we do this, then, um, does our lien take priority over another lien, or are we just in line?
Well, you, you, it depends which lien you refer to.
Like if we fixed it, say if you went in there and fixed it?
If you fix it, uh, you do have an argument that the cost of fixing it would come even ahead of the mortgagee, because you can collect those as, as taxes are collected, okay? Uh, the, the judgment for the penalty you get against the landlord does not come ahead of a, a mortgagee.
Okay. Well, I'm just thinking out loud, it almost looks like you could skin it and put metal siding on it, you know, to, to a point, but, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, about less than re-tuck pointing the whole building, you know, to preserve it from getting more water in here, I mean, that's, I, I don't know if that's even feasible, you know?
What you attach it to?
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to, uh...
Well, I think one of the biggest concerns I know through my office is the freezing thaw this winter.
I'm sorry?
One of the biggest concerns through my office is just the freezing thaw this winter, it was, that was our biggest concern last year.
Where we're here.
And we're here now, and it is worse, um, and it's just going to keep getting worse, you can even see physically some of the bricks, and especially this first picture, you can see them turned, um, you know, they're, the mortar just has dissolved. You know, the mortar just has dissolved.
That's the thing, down on the lower part.
Did he happen to get a quote for that before, right?
I thought at one point when he spoke to you, he had said he had talked to a contractor, which one, I'm not sure. I, I don't know if he had three estimates. I, I've never seen any. But I know he, he said he had spoke to a contractor about the cost.
If we were to do something like that to salvage the building, of course, once we would have, we would have to have somebody go and give us an idea of options of safely fixing it so it doesn't crumble compared to demolition. I'd say it'd be demolished, but you know, what we don't know is the other structural problems that are going on with the building on internally. In the roof. We don't know, the flooring. I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, you know, that, that's all wood floor. I mean, granted, it's old and naveling, but I'm looking at, you know, there's been a lot of.
Exposure.
It's been a while since I went in. I think that was when he was originally contacted. I went and went upstairs and I didn't see a whole lot of damage at that point. But again, it's been a year, at least to the inside. You know, I think. If we affirm the order and Andy sends out the notice and does a lien search, the problem may find a quicker solution if there is a mortgage company on it.
Yeah, I would, I would probably, if I found that, give a heads up to the mortgage company and say, "By the way, I'm, I'm drafting this complaint and if there's action on it, very promptly, some, some of the city might tell me to back off before the complaint gets filed." If I found an active mortgagie on it, that might be something I do.
Well, one thing's for sure, we were talking about this a year ago.
That's what that got us.
So if we don't do any action, we'll be talking about it again next year and saying it's still cold and it's getting worse. And you know, I think it needs to be addressed through Andy to file whatever we need to do for paperwork and.
The good part about, the good part about doing the paperwork now is that obviously it doesn't get any colder this winter. It's very difficult to do tuck point work at this stage of the year. But Andy has ample time now to do the paperwork, get it through the courts, talk to the mortgagie if there is one. You know, and at this point, it's not as if you're wasting daylight, so to speak. You know, you're not wasting your summer months, you know, when there could be work being done. So, you know, depending on what happens, you know, hopefully there would be an amicable solution before spring and everything will get taken care of. But either way, the paperwork would be done by spring and you'd be ready to go if you had to.
Because it's going to be less expensive if we do have to act on it quicker than later because it's going to keep getting worse.
Oh, agree.
So I guess we need to entertain a motion to proceed to.
Do affirm it.
To, pardon me?
Affirm it.
Affirm it? To let Andy go ahead and file the proper paperwork? Because it's not getting done here again a year later and we're still going to have to address the issue, so.
And what was the wording before when we talked to him, you know, when we did grant him?
I believe it was at the June meeting. I'd have to pull the minutes, but I'm pretty sure I documented in the minutes that you guys had, because you were wavering on whether to give him three, four months, six, you know, how far to take it out before winter. But I believe at that time, you granted him an extension through either to the October, November meeting. And at that point, he said he would have some scaffolding to try to get some repairs done.
I remember he said he was buying a piece of the time.
So basically, you just continued the, I believe that was the proper terminology, was that you continued the hearing to revisit for this meeting. Which means now you can take action because it was just continued.
I think we just needed to make a motion and let Andy do the research is my suggestion to the council. Someone make a motion and proceed is, and then that way, if we get to that point when it's nice weather, we can have a contractor come and if we have to get an estimate to fix it, it's, you know, it's at the point now. I think, like you say, John, I, I think upstairs, I, that's where you had the archery range. It seemed like, I haven't been up there for a while, but I, it's going to get worse if it doesn't get fixed, so. I'd hate to see the, the building demolished.
Yeah, I don't want to see that building.
It's an icon for the city.
I would like to, I would like for him to be here just to see where he was at.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure he'll come to the plate after we, if someone wants to make a motion or we can talk about it in another meeting too. I mean.
I'll make that motion. I got to change.
You made the motion to proceed. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Brian Murn seconded. All in favor? All against? Five to one passes. Okay, Andy, we'll just go ahead and proceed and thank you. Casey Coles for the record?
Yes.
Anything else, Casey?
No, probably not.